One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated, I'll ask the board of trade to call the robe.
Lawrence Bradley here, Hastings.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
Pistol.
Here.
Here.
This time I'll entertain a motion second to approve the agenda as presented.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? Ask for a roll call, a vote?
Bradley?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yeah.
Pistol?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
This time it brings us down to the approval of the minutes for October 8th and October 20th meeting, and also the monthly financials. I entertain a motion second for their approval.
Make a motion to approve it?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? Ask for a vote, a roll call?
Bradley?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yeah.
Pistol?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Brings us down to department head reports. I thought I might have Jason Hayes for the airport. If he comes in, we put him in late. We're still working on her. Oh, I'm sorry.
I saw him outside. He's outside?
Oh, okay. All right.
Can we get him?
Yeah, I just had him come in. Yeah. The airport, go ahead, Mr. Hayes. Just give us an update on whatever's going on over here.
Yes, sir. The slab is poured. They've ordered the building packet. Should be in in two to three weeks, they said. We have, go ahead and start the process on the first draw on that building, and then we'll get the packet in. When it's completed, we'll do the second draw after the first of the year.
I talked to Dan today, and he said a couple or three weeks, I think, before they get all their stuff in.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Everything else is going pretty smooth. We closed out the fuel grant, just getting things cleaned up and take care of some bookkeeping.
Somebody needs to clean off that sign out front. Somebody in this table said they'd do that, and they ain't got it done, but maybe I'm...
The one out in field?
No, the big mean.
Well, I cleaned it. It's probably been four years ago.
No, I'm talking about the one on the building here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I'll talk. Anything else?
No, sir.
Did, I read, whatever, lights on the lights? Have they put new lights on the runway?
Yes, sir. We're switching out the LED lights. Should reduce our electric bill. That was on a federal grant. So, on the federal grants, we'll get the, whatever proceeds they do, and then state electronics will reimburse us the Matthew money on that.
Do you think they're being cut that into the, yeah?
Yeah.
Anything else for Jason? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Brings us to animal control. Mr. Tim Pike.
We got ten calls in the city. Last month, picked up thirteen dogs and took to the shelter. We have a little room in the shelter right now.
You have room?
We have a few empty pens right now.
Okay. Yeah, I had that. Was some of those dogs the ones Steve Nunley got? That one, he just took them himself? Steve Nunley was cleaning up ninety-five, sixty?
These was thirteen puppies we picked up.
Okay.
The last council meeting, when I left here, I had to go pick up thirteen puppies that had been dumped.
Oh, okay. All right. I think he picked up seven or eight under a house he was moving in. He's got them all given away, I think, but one or two, and they're really cute. So, I told him I'd say that. So, good thing. Lori, anything for Officer?
That was the old house up there at ninety-five?
Yes.
Yes. I loaned him a crate to take in.
Yeah, that was a good deal y'all did. So, I think he's keeping the mama dog.
Yeah, he said he wanted her.
What about Lori? Lori, just a second. She talked about, she's got fifteen dogs in the house, twelve cats in the house, seventeen dogs left last week, and first Saturday in December, I think, seven more are set to be transported. She's out of town in Missouri. I think she might be getting away for a few days. Said maybe ask you about how that court case went?
Day played out.
Okay. All right. Anything else for animal control? Thank you. Brings us to the fire department report. Chief DLM.
I don't have a whole lot to report this month. We've had a good month. No fires, anything like that. I would like to thank the people for watching their grass fires. I know a lot of people are wanting to burn right now, their leaves and things. I would suggest to continue doing what they're doing as far as calling nine-one-ones, non-emergency number, eight-eight-four-six-thousand-five, just to let them know that they're burning. We have it on record because somebody may drive through with a cell phone, call in a fire, and it's not really a fire. But everybody's doing a good job with that, and I appreciate that. We've had one motor vehicle accident just the other night. No injuries. Wasn't any big thing big. I would like to make sure everybody remembers to keep washing your hands and wearing your mask. Our COVID numbers in the state and the county are going up, and it's getting flu time. So, everybody be vigilant. Other than that, if there's any questions I can answer, I'd be glad to answer them.
Anything for Chief Webb?
How'd the Halloween festival go? I didn't get to go.
I thought it went well. I would say eighty-five percent of the people were wearing masks, and we spread it out throughout downtown. So, it was pretty good social distancing. I think it went well for what we had without a haunted house and hayride this year.
Yeah, that thing pretty quick, too.
Yeah, well, everybody was out of Canada by eight o'clock.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Hayes just down the parks and street department report. Charles Wilson, please. Is he here? Is he outside?
Yeah, he's outside. Yes, sir? Whoa. Were we on streets or parks?
Street department.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't hear. Play like stealing. Street, park, or parks?
Parks department, we've been working on the lights, plugging it dim. We've got a little bit done. We've still got a long ways to go. fixing it, bucket truck here in a day or two, and start putting up some of the big stuff and get all that up, and we'll do our best to have it ready whenever the switch is supposed to be flipped. Street department, we're gonna start picking up brush again once a month. Probably be about the second, second week of the month, we'll do brush for a couple days. Everybody needs to keep the brush piles down to four-by-four, just like our ordinance says. If it's bigger than that, then it may sit there a while. So, if you got brush, keep it small. Keep it easy where we can get it in a day or two, and everybody can have their fair share in a day or two. Don't pile up a big pile where I gotta spend two days at one house. So, if I have to do that, then their pile's set there long enough for me to get everybody else's, and then we'll come back to it whenever we get a chance to just get pieces of it. So...
You say you're gonna do that after first of the year, or?
No, we'll probably start after the Christmas lighting, the fifth, probably in that December. Probably start in that month. That way, everybody's got a chance to get everything. And like I said, as long as everybody keeps them small, where we can do them in a couple days, I mean, it'll work out great. Because we can hit just about every house in the city in about two or three days. But if we gotta spend two days at one house picking up brush, that kills it. That knocks everybody else out of getting their chance to get the brush.
I had kinda keep it, follow the rules, four-by-four, best you can. If you do any leaves, wait till they're all down and might have a day, or come by and suck them up with a leaf vac, but wait till they're all down. It'll be a while. And then I had on the Christmas light, always can use helpers.
Yes. Anybody wants to help? Like I said, it's hard for people to come out and help during the week. The weekends, I pretty much like to be with my family. I give the city a hundred percent five days a week, but on the weekends, I kinda like to be with the wife and kid and people around. But I will come in on a weekend if I got a crew and I know they're gonna come in to work and do something. I'll come in and help them. I don't have a problem with it. Anybody's got any questions, or?
Oh, I've got. Any other questions for Charles Wilson? Streets are looking better, and you and Will are working together on some of those things. I appreciate that.
Yeah. I mean, we got a long ways to go, but I mean, you just gotta do it as you get time to do it. He's strapped shorthanded as I am, and we just kinda gotta do things as we get along to do them. Everybody just stay patient and keep riding out the storm with us. It'll eventually get clear.
Might test those lights on Saturday and Sunday at your house?
Yes. I've carried a few to the house. I get in trouble, but all the good thing is I don't have to...
You've been getting a lot done and getting a lot of that. That's a tough time of year.
Yeah.
All jokes aside, I know you're...
Well, I mean, it's a lot of work. Nobody, unless you sit down and go through several hundred stands of lights and change bulbs and zip tie.
I know.
Unless you sit down and put five hundred zip ties on one little frame, and that's, I mean, it's pretty tedious. It's...
Volunteers will help, for sure.
Yeah.
Anything else for Charles? Thank you, man. Brings us down to police department report. Officer Scott Sull.
For the month of October, we had a fairly active month. We had seventy-five calls for service, wrote thirty-two reports, worked twelve accidents, several of them been on Highway sixty-five, done our usual, quite a few property checks, several motors to assist, wrote forty-five citations, issued ten warnings. So, it was a fairly active month. Mayor, as you guys know, we're down to four active officers. Dustin Adams, he resigned last month, took the job with propane company. Audi DeFren, he's, of course, in the police academy. The ALITA, or Arkansas Law Enforcement Officers Training Academy, they've kinda expedited his class. He'll be graduating next month, and he should be back with us around the twenty-fifth, back on the streets with us. Of course, we're also short the chief's position. Officer Adams, we've got with the mayor and Ms. Dana, and we've advertised on social media, also in the newspaper for it, and hopefully, we'll get that filled here one of these days. But that's about all we've got, unless somebody has some questions.
Well, that's why I had to know you're shorthanded right now. I'll give you a decision on that pretty quick. I think it'll be, you're about two people short, and y'all been going. I know you've been going all day. If anyone's got any questions for Scott, you... Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Brings us down to water and sewer department. Will Hinchey. Thanks, Scott. Your boss here. Oh, okay. Sorry. Yeah, he went back to make some coffee. Let's go ahead to the zoning department. We'll just late frog him. Zoning department will tell you who are.
All right. We got, let's see, a couple of completed projects, the plant and storage units, whole medical remodel, of course, the airport. They're waiting on a building package. There's a small home that's been permitted to be built at six-six-nine Frazier Street. I don't know if y'all know, it's a little corner. Been vacant, vacant for a while. So, got somebody gonna build a small home there. Pottery shop, they're putting up a small shed, and we've got one residential remodel going on on Highway ninety-five east. The A and P are sponsoring the Rotary Club that is putting on It's a Wonderful Life, December the twelfth, at the school auditorium, and want to thank the two guys that are playing the main role, which is Jeff Pistol and Sean Hastings. Appreciate you guys doing that.
Suzie's pet, that's good, yeah.
I heard Gavin Drew.
He wants Clarence.
They can do them all.
Okay, scratch that. It's not them. It's Sam and Richard, actually.
I can't hear you anyway.
No, but this is professionally done, and I think they do a good job every year. So, A and P was happy to sponsor that. December the fifth, A and P's doing the Christmas at the park. On that night, we'll light up the park with the Christmas lights. We'll have hot chocolate and cookies for the kids, Santa Claus. Charles has created the Polar Express train ride. We'll also have hayride. Of course, the Death Star will be there, and Charles has also done an incredible job building this life-size gingerbread house. It's not, it's not one of those that sits on a table to look at. It's one you can actually walk into. He's done a real good job on that. We may have the Clydesdales down there for a wagon ride. We are?
We are.
We are gonna have that. And of course, we'll also have Christmas music playing, brought to you by the sweet, sweet sounds of DJ Tim McCool. Jessica Farnsworth could not be here tonight to give you her year-end report. I know Dana's got this, Richard's got it, and I think this is something that y'all will probably be going over in y'all's budget manual. So, this is something y'all can consider when y'all, when y'all do the budget. Flood plane update. I did speak with Lee Brishoner. He's the head engineer of FTN, and he told me that everything has been signed. FEMA has budgeted the money, and in January, first of January, we'll see surveyors, boots on the ground, doing some surveys, hydrology testing, and stuff like that for the final stage, final testing for our new flood plane maps.
Yeah. I just want to point out that I've had questions on that, and I think it was confirmed by Whip. The election results, whatever, has nothing to do with affecting the financing of this. So, it's...
Yeah.
It's a go.
That's...
And I'm just waiting on, just waiting on the prices back for doing the town branch, digging it out a little bit from Sharon Myers.
Yeah.
Philip Anderson's old place down to the bridge by the Fury Building.
But as far as FTN and them doing the stud, final study, that money's been approved. They've been paid, and so that's gonna happen.
Good. Congratulations on that. Luminaries, you mentioned that. They want Buddy with us at the...
Ozark Health? The Ozark Health, the luminaries? Ozark Health, the luminaries?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, they want to do it at the park?
I think so. And I should get with you guys and Lisa Drew.
Tim, I don't know if we can have hayrides. Are we doing hayride? I don't think that hayride was approved. Hayride, did you approve that? I mean, the state, did they get approved? Did you put that on that piece paper?
I don't know if we put the hayride on there. That was...
I don't think we can do hayrides. We weren't able to do hayrides on the, you know, home.
We might not be able to do the wagon rides, either.
Well, you know, the old train guy said that he got rid of that because COVID. But I did talk to Steve Landers, and he said they were planning on bringing the Clydesdales down to the park, but I don't know about the hayrides.
Like we did plan it and due to cancellation, you know, like that we can't handle the crowd or whatever. There's not a...
But I guess, if we can add that to our plan and they approve it, I guess it would be okay.
Right.
Okay, so we'll try to get that done.
I know the choir's coming, but the jazz band cannot come, and so we've got a few people listening, but maybe smaller, maybe big. I don't know.
Charles just said last year, there was, you know, a line to get on the train, and there's a line here. And if you had, you know, the more things you've got, the less people have to wait to, you know, get on something and do something. So, we'll, we'll just add that and resubmit it and see what they... Because this last time, it took less than a week for them to get back to me on it. So, we'll see if we can get that taken care of.
Okay.
I think a lot of local businesses are gonna go ahead and do their, you know, their Christmas open house at the same time that we do. So, we're thinking we incorporate the same day.
Any questions? Anyone? Anyone?
Nope. Thank you. Now, we'll jump back to water and sewer department. Will Hinchey. Thanks for running that other stuff down.
All right. All right, we'll start with the usual. This last month, the water loss was at twenty-seven percent. Burnt Ridge went down a little bit to the thirty-seven percent, and then ours was at twenty-five. But that twenty-seven is all three together. So, overall, Clinton was at twenty-seven percent. Chemical cost was at seventy-seven cents per thousand. It went down, too. So, our manganese stuff's still down. I've got a few updates. Of course, everybody knows, last month, we talked about the meter project going on. With that meter project, right now, there's two thousand seven hundred thirteen five-eighths by three-quarters. So, that's your residential. That's what everybody has at their house, meters in the ground. There's forty-eight one-inch meters. We run shy on those. There's some on back orders, so we'll get the rest of those in. So, we're ninety-five percent completed on the project. It took them right at three weeks. So, yesterday morning, we actually got to start reading those through the computer program, and we read ninety-nine point six percent on our first run. So, that's pretty good. There was only nine meters that we couldn't read. So, I wanna take this off. Anyway, in two weeks, they will come and actually give us our training on that. They'll come in. The computer programmer will come in the office. He'll give Wendy, Donna, and myself a training course on how to operate this. I do have it on my phone. I can pop it up and look at everything. I can see how many leaks it's showing. This morning, we went in there, showed two-hundred-and-two leaks. When you look at each individual, it would show that half a gallon a minute was going through the meter or others, and we were able to call around. Or if they were big, I went out and looked at a couple myself, and actually found a couple of issues for some customers. So, it is gonna pay off. We've got, we had two leaks going on today in town. We had the one up on School Hill. They, and then we had the one at Montrose, out towards the lake, and they actually both showed loss of pressure through these meters. So, that'd be handy, too. So...
Good.
But like I said, in two weeks, after they come and set up our program, customers be able to call or come in with the office, and they'll have to set up the password, and they'll be able to see their stuff live. It'll report every four hours. It reads on the hour, but every four hours, it comes through the office. But you get to see that hourly deal. So, I'm learning how to operate it on my phone. Right now, I'm dangerous. So, I've got it set up where I can't change anything. I can just view it. And that's the way it is right now. That's the way it's set up. So, we got the Pollard Project bids put out. They, those bid openings will actually be on the seventeenth of this month. So, it was, it was flown in the Democrats. So, contractors will be sending their bids in soon. We've talked before about, and we voted to extend what the contractors did north, coming on down, that eight-hundred foot. We come up with the money to go ahead and pay for that because years passed, we had actually run a thousand foot from the bridge there at sixteen up the hill. We actually had to put that in service last week. We had a leak underneath the state highway, and we just switched it over. So, that line, that thousand foot, is live. So, once we put that other eight-hundred foot, it's gonna be practically all-new going north, leaving Clinton. So, that's a good thing. We are still having breaks on the new up north with, with the slides and stuff. We had, two weeks ago, we had two different slides. So, they're, even the new is sliding right now, but we're hoping to get that fixed, too. Highway department, once they get all their, their new banks and everything put in, the contractors come back and, and put new line in again. So... From the office, we have been getting several complaints on the new installation, new problems, lots of complaints and stuff, but the most complaints that we've got repetitive is people being upset because the water department's locking them out of their meters. This is the meter lids that you'll see on your meters now. This is the lock that everybody's having an issue with. It's a spring-loaded plastic latch, and at any point in an emergency situation, if someone wants to get into it, a screwdriver, a knife, or anything, we'll open that. We are not trying to keep you out of it in an emergency situation. So, I just wanted to clarify that. But if there is an emergency and you can't get in it, always call the on-call, call the office, and we will come out and help you as quick and as fast as we can. But like I said, I think there's already a lot of positive stuff going on with these meters. We're able to see them at the office, pop up with their leaks. So, I do think it's gonna be a good thing. Is there any questions on the meter?
You could run over the lawnmower, right?
Well, I wouldn't recommend it, but I don't recommend any... I don't recommend running over any meter box with a lawnmower, but we were talking about this outside earlier. This, this part right here that's sticking up, it does not stick up over the meter lid itself. This is the reading part. This is what actually sends the signal to the office. And there are two different, one runs off of Verizon Tower, and one runs off AT&amp;T. And like this one right here is an MS. So, if I'm not mistaken, the MS one is the Verizon one. And when they did that prop study, they actually seen which area sent the most signal. Yeah, so that's what the difference is. So, if I have a new customer, I look at the prop study, and it tells me what to put in that area.
I think you said earlier on, I think, to do this. I mean, it's not to keep you out. It's just to discourage just getting in and out. It's electronic stuff.
That lid is actually called, it's called a locking lid. Well, that's called a latch lid. It's just a latch. It's a keeper pin on there. It's not a lock. Yes, I mean, the, the water meter does belong to the city, but we at no time want to keep anybody from being able to shut off their water if they have an emergency. So, I just want to clarify that.
How long did you say it took to read them all?
Push of a button.
Push of a button?
Yeah.
So, instead of three, four days to read the meters, we're just...
At any point, now, when I say it pushes a button, it reads every four hours. So, if I go in there and I push that button, within the four hours, I'm going to get the reading. So, within four hours, all the meters in the whole system will be read. You know, Mr. The Birds, we were talking, you know, at the meeting Tuesday night, that, well, my meter got read twenty-five days this time, so next time, it's gonna be a little higher. We've started, we've been really trying to read five days, but when it falls short, I think last month, we started on the eighth instead of the tenth. We actually started two days early. So, now, Monday morning, when we go in the office, that's gonna be reading day. So, we will actually read next Monday morning. So, and then next month, we'll read on the same day. Now, right now, the big two-inch meters, three-inch meters, stuff like that, are just now being installed. So, they're not in the program. But Monday morning, I'm gonna send guys out, and we're gonna read those the same day.
What was the deal? You said ran them all but nine meters? What?
Right now, we have nine meters that are in the ground that are showing that we're not receiving a signal from them. So, after we go through there and we actually read it on Monday, we'll be able to go in there and look and see which one of those are the nine. But right now, we still do not have all the meter lids in. If you've got a metal box out front of your house, you still have a metal lid, and it will not read through a lid unless it's a real strong signal. So, in saying that, once we get all the lids replaced, we may be able to read them all. But ninety-nine point six percent is pretty good.
When you was talking about the password a minute ago, were you talking about the app that's gonna be available?
Yes.
Okay, will you put it on our phone?
Yes. Right now, I can share, like us in the office, it got shared through an email. So, I got an email link that had the website, and I just uploaded it to my phone. And then, like right now, I'm going into, I can go to the internet here on the phone, and it pops up, which I just went in it, but I'll go back out. And then I've got a little beacon here on the frequently, frequent-reviewed sites. I hit on it, and then right here, it's showing me right now, still ninety-nine point six percent is what we're reading right now. There's nine that's not reporting, and then you go down. Right now, I'm showing... And then you go down, right now, I'm showing, and this is the same as what it was this morning, there was 23 leaks that we had issues on, or 203. Today, there was actually 91 backflows. On that 91 backflows, that could be in the areas where we had the two leaks.
But that's showing all? I'm talking about, is there one where each?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. You, the ones that the customers would get will be set up like this. This is what you'll see. But instead of it being everyone's, it'd be a graph on yours.
Okay.
You know, when I go into a leaking one here that has a name, it actually, that'd be what you get to see, you just get to see your own, so. And it'll send you alerts on your leaks and things like that. Now, right now, it's sending alerts when they're not really leaks. It's just set to where so many gallons go through there, it's alerting. So some of the alerts we get, and we go through there, like it's a car wash. Well, you know, we're gonna have to go in there, and that's what the guy that's coming, that's gonna help us set it all up, he's gonna actually say, all right, so we need to set this one a little bit higher to where it runs and stays going for so many hours instead of so many minutes. So that way, we don't get so many alerts, but we'll get that pin pointed down.
Well, what all information will be available on that app for me to see?
You'll be able to see, like, real time, every four hours. What, like, if you weren't home and your water started running, you'll be able to see that. You'll be able to see a graph on how much you use a day, and then for a seven-day run and for a month run. So there won't be any surprises on when you get your water bill.
Well, can I set it where it'll send me an alert?
Yes. It'll alert you, yeah. Yeah, and from what I've been told, if you haven't even been into that app in a year, and you're off on vacation, and all of a sudden, you'll get an alert. You know, so it don't matter, you don't have to go in and update it. It's supposed to just send you an alert, so.
Is that something, like the alert, is that something you set up? Like, it'll alert me if it's going this many gallons in an hour? Is it just thought about?
It's what I say, I think you can customize yours. But like I said, I'll know more in two weeks when they come and finish this.
Pretty neat.
I find myself looking at it all day long. I do. Of course, mine, I get to see every customer. I get to see every customer, you know. It shows me which one of my customers in the top 10 are using the most water right now. I guess I'm supposed to treat them different. I don't. But I can't tell you, but I was surprised on some of them, seriously, so. But like I said, right now, we don't have those big 2-inch meters reading and stuff like that. So we don't have a lot of our commercial stuff, so. We do like some more 1-inch meters, but like I said, we're about 95%. The only customer or installer you'll see going around right now is the guy doing the 2-inch and the 3. And then they'll be back here in a couple of weeks when they get the rest of the meter lids put in, so. And at Burnt Ridge, we actually did a change order. Burnt Ridge has the old Ford boxes. I don't know if you know what I'm talking about. It's a metal box, it's only about yay-so big, and setter and everything's all connected to it. So when the box gets bad, the setter's bad, it's all built together. So we actually had to run over, and we're gonna change that to their regular meter loops. So that change order was accepted by NRC, and they'll come back and do that also.
You happy with the project so far?
Yeah, I'm thrilled. The guy, we got really lucky. I've actually talked to a lot of other supply houses and stuff, and M&amp;E that come and did ours, they're really good. And we were real fortunate to get them, so.
Cool. Okay, anything else for, we'll hit you. Thank you very much. You can go feed your cows. That brings us down to old business. The first is the ordinance, the street cut bond ordinance, the third reading. This is, and I'm gonna read the permit on this. This is, we've been working on for a while, tried to get it right. We finally got our permit, and we sent that to you. I'm gonna read that out loud here in a minute. But at this time, I'll entertain a motion second to place it on the third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion second. Ask for a roll call.
Bradley?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yep.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
This is an ordinance for the City of Clinton, Arkansas, to increase the bond required for street cut excavations. We've read that before, and also, we've added a permit. We were waiting on a permit that you have to come in and actually get. And we'd kind of come up with one, been working on it, and we took it to the city attorney, and he said, looks pretty good, some things you can't do this, it is. We tried to make it comply with our ordinance. This is a copy of that, I'll give it the picture of that. But this permit, it gives an address, City of Clinton, has a date. It says, "In accordance with the street cut permit number, whatever the ordinance is, I hereby accept responsibility for payment of cost of anything relating to street repairs. The date of work will start in, on this date. Location of the work, type of job, will it be a cut, remove, modify, et cetera? Type of replacement, you're gonna go back with asphalt, chip and seal, concrete, compaction test, et cetera? Contractor's name and phone number, the subcontractor's name and phone number, if that's necessary? Responsible party, printed name and signature? Permit approval, the street department supervisor or designee of the mayor? Restoration bond amount, that's in our ordinance, we'll set that amount, not something exorbitant, but it'll be something fair. Also, it has a line for a final approval. Call the street department, it has the number, or it also has city hall's number. The street department representative must be present before fill begins." That's really the critical point of this whole thing is compaction. Like I said, Will's gone, but they've done a good job of going back and fixing some of those divots that looked good for six months and then sank down because it wasn't compacted. It also says, "Any fill work done without final approval must be redone and approved." There's a $500 fine for failure to comply with the terms of this permit. And also, I'll indicate one thing that Chad pointed out to us. It goes along with our ordinance right up under date, and it has our cut permit number. Says, "I accept responsibility for payment of any cost relating to street repairs." So that helps the city out. If they go in and they break something and say, well, I just had a $2,000 bond, and I'm just gonna leave and not fix it for any cost of repairs. Not something exorbitant, but we'll get our money back that way. And also, it talks about the final approval, and that's where we have someone on site to observe the fill, observation, because when you're compaction, that's really your key. So this is something that's good. Do you want to add?
I think you covered it, yeah.
Okay, all right. I read the title, that's for the third reading. Any discussion of questions on that? Like I say, I think y'all have a copy of that, and I'll give everybody in the audience a copy of this too. Okay, I'll entertain a motion, I'll entertain a motion second to adopt the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I'll ask for a vote.
Bradley?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yep.
Lynch?
Yeah.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Yes.
2020-07.
Okay, thank y'all for your patience. Thanks for Charles, Tim, work on that, and Fairfield Bay, and help us with our permit, and Chad, thank you. Glad to get that behind us. The other thing is levying the village, we talked about that early. Council and Pistol talked about at some point maybe modifying that, but we'll wait and see how that goes, when we get some real numbers we can work with. At this time, I'll entertain a motion in a second to place this on the third reading by title only.
Motion with.
Second. Second. This is an ordinance for the city to increase the bond required to, I'm sorry, ordinance to leave the village at 2.9 for any real personal property. Any discussion on that? I'll ask for a vote.
Bradley?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yeah.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
This time, I'll entertain a motion second to adopt the ordinance.
Can I make a motion to adopt it?
Second.
Any other discussion? Ask for a roll call.
Bradley?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yeah.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
2020-08.
This brings us down to new business, ordinance to repeal liquor prohibition. This time, we talked about this before the election. We said, we're not gonna deal with this, we'll wait and see how the election comes. And then if it's voted, county goes wet, we'll do it all at one time. And that's what we're gonna go ahead and do tonight. I'll entertain a motion in second to suspend the rules and place on the first, second, and third reading. And I'll read it.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Okay. I'll ask for a vote. Let me read this.
We gotta vote?
Don't read it.
We gotta vote?
Okay, go ahead and vote.
Bradley?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
I'll read this, and you can read that other thing that you have it on to. This is an ordinance, an ordinance for the City of Clinton, Arkansas, to repeal Title IV, Chapter 4.20 of the Code of Ordinances, whereas the voters of Van Buren County approve the manufacture or sale of intoxicating liquors in the November general election, and whereas the City of Clinton Municipal Code currently prohibits the transportation or sale of intoxicating liquors, and whereas the City of Clinton Municipal Code should be updated to reflect the will of the people. By adopting the Municipal Code, it was the intent of the City of Clinton to codify existing city ordinances but not enact new legislation. Now therefore being ordained by the City Council of the City of Clinton, Arkansas, that Title IV, Chapter 20 of the Code of Ordinances in the City of Clinton, Arkansas, is hereby repealed. Is there any discussion on any of that?
I'll make a motion to adopt it.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Just to explain again, I think it might be planned, or you guys have already gone over. But I pass around, these are the three, these are the three code divisions that are currently on the books. They are, I think they were passed probably in the 1940s. They have, in recent times, modern times, whatever we'll call it, in recent years, at least as long as I've been prosecuting, they're not enforced because we have existing state laws that already covered this ground. So they were kind of just sort of harmless, old, antiquated laws that were on our books that really weren't hurting anything. The concern is now that we've elected to go wet, is this going to prevent someone from transaction, what we believe would be legal business within the city limits? And the idea would be that if you got rid of this, then at least there won't be that question anymore. So again, that's why it's presented to you today.
I think John pointed that out a long time ago. Go through those. Okay, any other discussion on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion in a second to adopt the ordinance.
We already did.
What?
We already made a motion.
Okay. I'll ask for a roll call.
Bradley?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yeah.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
2020-09.
Brings us down to thank y'all, thank Chad for that work.
I'm just, I'm sorry, just one more, just to clarify where we're standing. There's not an emergency clause on here. I didn't add an emergency clause on here. I don't believe it's necessary. It's gonna, it'll take, so basically, we're talking about 30 days before it takes into effect. I don't think this is going to negatively impact anybody for being able to commence sales, from my understanding, because I think it's, the window from when that'll begin is more than 30 days out. So I don't think the existence of this is gonna impact anybody's eligibility with the ABC. So just.
I discussed a lot of that, so if it doesn't pass, we won't have to deal with it, but I appreciate it. Brings us down to any public comments.
You passed it first, you did first, second, third. So it's passed, you just have the referral process.
If not, I'll have some mayor's comments. One is, starting to work on the budget, had been for a while actually, but we'll start putting something together by the, maybe by the end of next week, and then start looking at it, and maybe definitely try to get everybody there, department heads, get their things together. And maybe by Monday, not this Monday, but the next, we'll all sit down. If we don't get it through by Thanksgiving, which we probably won't, because it takes a couple of nights usually, we will come back after the Thanksgiving holiday. But I feel very comfortable we can have something before the next meeting and pass it at the December meeting. It's good to have a sheriff and a chief deputy in the audience, thanks for coming by, you know, doing a good job, working with the city well. Is there any other thing that needs to be brought up at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion in a second. For one thing I did want to say, start naming names, but Jack Knight passed away. He was a good Clinton boy, a good fella. And June Cook, had her service today, worked at the bus station forever, made the best pies probably of anybody in the county. No offense to any, many cooks, but she was the pie queen, she really was. She had a great service, and she looked really good. And Sam Shannon Jr. did a phenomenal job. So thank you, Sam and Becky. And that's Dina's kinfolk, and June was a friend of many. Be great to miss. If nothing else, I entertain a motion second for June.
Make a motion with you.
Second.